Hi, welcome.
How are you?
Good.
Sir, how are you?
Hey, this is amazing.
How are you?
Good.
Yeah, I was taking it for the last one.
What about mine?
I always sit right there in the corner and I was gonna grab that and I'm like, shoot, somebody stop me!
No, I'm sorry. I'm only doing my first time to the table, so I can get up with my hands out here.
Make sure I get us, get in, get out.
He said, people need more privacy.
Oh, you want to talk to a chick?
Oh, so, next time I get a chance, I have to keep that.
Hi.
Do you have anybody on the line?
Please, Mr. York.
Jason.
David Smith, good morning.
Good morning.
So, I thought I heard Jenny Fashano.
Yep, Jenny Fashano's here.
How are you, Jenny?
Hi.
Good morning, everyone. I ask you please rise for the open hearing, pledge allegiance.
Dearly Father, we thank you for your goodness and for your blessings over us. We thank you for the hope that we have in our toughest times that we face as an individual or a nation. You are our source of strength, hope, and peace and love. We lift up those that are in need this morning. Father, you know each one of those needs. We ask that you will touch each one of those lives and answer those prayers. We pray for our frontline workers, emergency personnel, and all that are at risk. Protect them with your righteous hand and sustain them with health and strength. For tomorrow, we will remember the history of our veterans of foreign fair, foreign wars. From its origin in 1899 by a group of veterans, it has grown to be the largest group of combat veterans. These outstanding veterans continue to honor the dead by helping the living. The VFW promotes patriotism and goodwill. Their generosity has provided military assistance and community service programs to their local communities. We thank you for these men and women who continue to show their love by helping their communities with their dedication and efforts. Now, this morning, Father, we ask you that your will be done in our meaning. We will pray that you will take our efforts and steer them and align with your will. May they be multiplied and exceed any goals or benchmarks. May we celebrate and always give you the glory when we are blessed. You have placed us in a beautiful valley we call home, surrounded by your creation. Let us savor each day and strive to be more like you. These things we humbly pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. We convene in the commissary's public meeting at this time, and we ask for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to the third.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry on. We have public comments on agenda items only at this time. If you please send the podiums, state your names to the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Strowman, Woodward Township, Pennsylvania. I'm here to speak on item 6.9, Resolution 2021-12, to signify the Board of Commissioners' support for the Second Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. We are a community and we are a family. I want to thank the Commissioners for consideration of this resolution and say that how important it is for our Constitution to be defended on a local level. Appreciate your courage. The Second Amendment truly is a line in the sand for federal government overreach and want to say that this constituent fully supports this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can you add a public comment this time? Yes, sir.
Victor Welsh, Limestone Township. I'm also here in support of the resolution. I'm asking you to all consider that. We need to keep our rights. We are having too many of them stripped away from us every day, and we appreciate you guys looking into this.
Thank you. Thank you.
For the sake of Commissioners, I also speak in favor of Resolution 6.9. I had a couple quotes I like to read a lot from the founding fathers. Benjamin Franklin said, "They that cannot, they that can give up essential liberty to obtain a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." George Mason said, "To disarm the people is the most effectual way to enslave them." George Mason said, "I asked, who are the militia? They consist now of the whole people." Noah Webster said, "Before a standing army can rule, the people must be disarmed, as they are in almost every country in Europe. The supreme power in America cannot enforce unjust laws by the sword because the whole body of the people are armed and constitute a force superior to any band of regular troops." And James Madison also said, "The ultimate authority wherever they derive, the derivative may be found, resides in the people alone." Richard Henry Lee said, "A militia, when properly formed, are in fact the people themselves and include, according to the past and general usage of the states, all men capable of bearing arms. To preserve liberty, it is essential that the whole body of the people always bear arms and be taught alike, especially when young, how to use them." Patrick Henry said, "Guard with zealous attention to public liberty. Unfortunately, nothing will preserve it but downright force. Whenever you give up that force, you are ruined. The great object is that every man be armed. Everyone who's able might have a gun." St. George Tucker said, "In England, the right to self-defense is the first law of nature, and most governments, it has been the study of rulers to confine this right within the narrowest limits possible. Wherever the right of the people to keep and bear arms is prohibited, liberty, if not already annihilated, is on the brink of destruction." It's this topic has never gone away. It never will go away because tyrants always want to disarm the people. Look at what's happening in Australia right now. That can't happen in America, and no one would have believed it could happen in Australia. Australia is now a police state because those people gave up the right to keep and bear arms. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, certainly for having this meeting, and I rise as well in support of 6.9. There is no question but that there is a fast attrition of our rights and liberties in this country right now. I think at any level of government, from the federal on down, it's not arguable that there is a definite push to eradicate borders and eradicate the nation-state and eradicate all of the accumulated rights and liberties from the past thousand-plus years of common law and our Constitution. And that being said, the Second Amendment in this nation is the linchpin not just for the United States but for the entire world. Once again, it was just referenced what is happening in various countries around the world or has happened. In Australia, the United Kingdom, New Zealand, you can read a list that would span most of the nations on the earth that don't have the liberties that we have. And those liberties have been the guarantee of freedom in this country and in no small part to the entire world for the last century and a half to two centuries with the rise of the United States of America. Anything that you can do to undergird that is an act of patriotism and constitutional lawfulness and must be undertaken. You must do this. Freedom is not free. Freedom isn't something that is handed to you on a silver platter. Freedom is not something that is wished for and given. It is not a mother may I system. It must be fought for, paid for, with life, treasure, and blood, and we have done that many times. I pray, God, we won't have to do it again. But it will only be staunch, and this march of national international totalitarianism will only be staunch by people, good people in offices such as yours, to rise to the occasion and do what needs to be done when it needs to be done. You have the support of your constituents. You have the support of your nation. Regardless of what the news media says, regardless of what fraudulent polls are mentioned in the nightly news, you have the solemn duty to look at this and be affirmative in passing 6.9 and making our county one to be counted as a constitutional county and against any totalitarianism or anything fostered by this federal government that we know in fact is unlawful. I could go on, but I will not. I think those who are of the bent to understand what I mean and understand the gravity of this will do the right thing. The others, I will not try to evangelize because it's useless. I appreciate your time, and I thank you. Thank you.
Can you introduce yourself? We need to put on the record.
I am Richard Hauser from 2440 Blair Street, Royal Dock.
William L. Emmett, 12903 Wallace Run Road, Trap Run, Pennsylvania. I appreciate your time today, guys, and thanks for the fight. This is something that's really, you know, comes down to every person in our county. If our federal government happens to come in and they want our weapons, our police departments are going to be forced to do what the federal government wants to do, not our local enforcement rules and regulations. It's going to come down to the federal government, and it's going to put a burden on our local police officers in the state. I know that they said the reasons the district attorney had for, you know, considering this and not considering this was because of money, of funding from the federal government for certain operations within the state where they go after drug dealers and stuff like that, that, you know, may cut some of that funding. I think the taxpayers of our area, you know, pay for the police officers and stuff within the state, and if they needed any extra money, the people within the state, in the township, the counties, would support them, and they wouldn't need the money from the federal government. You know, you're not talking much that they get from the federal government to do these extra things as far as law enforcement. You know, I would give up my paycheck every week to give to law enforcement if that's what they needed, to do their job and to also give us our rights or to keep our rights for the Constitution. I really do support this, and I hope you guys do, and I thank you for what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Catherine Burns, 219 White Church Road, Muncie, Pennsylvania. I want to take it just a step farther as how much we need something to be done regarding red flag laws. Victims of abuse that have suffered and sought counseling can have their weapons taken away from them permanently and have no way to defend themselves, and that is part of what we're fighting against today. And I thank each and every one of you, all three of you, and we need you, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bob Pryor, I live in Mifflin Township, Jersey Shore School District. Thanks for having this meeting today and allowing me to speak. I had my socks knocked off of me this morning when I got in to review the September 13th Jersey Shore Area School Board meeting. There was a notice saying that the video was removed by YouTube. Now, you're talking about a local government entity here. YouTube removed the minutes from the site because they didn't agree with what I guess about 30 people got up and said concerning the mask mandates and the COVID-19 and the actions that are being taken in our school. That's terrible. That's a definite violation of our First Amendment rights. And when it comes to the 6.9 here that you're voting on today, if they can do that to our First Amendment, they can do it to our Second Amendment, and that's why it's very important that Lycoming County have a sanctuary for our Second Amendment rights. And I know you have the backbone to do what's right, and I don't care what party anybody's from, we have got to stop this because our country has gone down the tubes. As a veteran who enlisted, I wasn't drafted, I enlisted to protect our country at age 17 during Vietnam. I was willing to lose life or limb, and I still will abide by the oath that I took, and I hope it never comes to violence, but if this government keeps doing the things they're doing, God bless us.
Amen. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. My name is Kevin Moore. I'm from Cogan House Township, Lycoming County. I'm a resident, excuse me, I am a former township supervisor of Cogan House Township. Also, I'm a God-fearing, gun-toting member of the NRA, Gun Owners of America, and a Lycoming County Patriot. In 2015, I came across a robbery in what, in action in Cogan House Township. I had to drive a half a mile to get cellphone service to report that to the state police. When I got back to the scene, the perps were gone, and the state police hadn't even arrived yet. My point is, we live in an area in Lycoming County where we, the people, are the police. We have to have our firearms to protect ourselves. We did apprehend those guys at Sheets down on Main Street, which was a good thing. We all heard the saying in our lifetime that there are only two things in life that are certain: taxes and death. Well, I submit to you all, there's a third one. There's always going to be a politician out there after my firearms, and that's all I have to say. I thank you for your support for 6.9.
Anyone else?
It's been a long walk carrying the Second Amendment ordinance this far, and to see it voted on today is a tremendous feeling. So many people have gotten it here. The thousands and thousands of signatures I've collected, the memberships that allow people to see what's going on in the country, in the state. It's a little overwhelming, you know, it's not the big fish that I so long for, but this step forward is certainly, certainly the right thing. Protecting our right to keep and bear arms and protecting this county from the federal overreach that is everywhere, all the time. I stopped believing the federal government had my best interests in 2017 when I saw them bring the full weight of government against a sitting president. I haven't changed my mind. I don't know if I'll ever change my mind at 65. However, thanks one hell of a lot, fellas, all of you.
Thank you. Okay. One more? Yes.
Good job. For our stock commissioners, again, thank you for taking some time here for us. It's so important to us. I'm here to support the resolution as well. Name is Don Peters. I'm a long-term resident of Cummings Township, Lycoming County. The authors of our United States Constitution and the Constitution and the Commonwealth were clearly brilliant, if not clairvoyant. They knew from experience exactly what it took to break free from a repressive tyrannical government. They also knew that it was the citizens of a free nation, when they are armed, they could never be outnumbered or overcome by any military, that a future tyrannical government arisen within would use against them in their attempt to control and remove the freedoms of those citizens. That is why a key step in any fledgling totalitarian regime is to begin to restrict and ultimately remove firearms from the citizens by law, or if that fails, by executive order, many of which have been enacted and others which are now being considered in our government. In our founding documents, there are three specific terms defining three specific groups: the United States, the states, and thirdly, the people or the citizens. Contained in the resolution before us today are profoundly meaningful statements found within the founding documents of our nation and our Commonwealth, including the right of the people to keep and bear arms should not be infringed, and the right of the citizens to bear arms and the defense of themselves and the states should not be questioned. The writers of Pennsylvania Constitution wrote that they had put such provisions in place, quote, "to guard against transgressions of the high powers, which we have delegated to the government. Relevant to that provision, the Tenth Amendment of our United States Constitution states, 'The powers not delegated to the United States by Constitution nor prohibited by it to the states are reserved to the states and respectively or to the people.'" Clearly, such articles and terminology were put in place in our founding documents by men who could foresee a time when the federal government or executive branch of a state government would begin overstepping their bounds and imposing authoritarian mandates upon the states and the citizens thereof. Ladies and gentlemen, that time has arrived, when the executive branch of our federal government has begun mandating that citizens of our nation, a large percentage of which who are fully immune to the coronavirus from previous exposure, must still receive a highly questionable and very recently developed substance via injection or face termination from their employment, careers, and livelihood. A man-engineered virus, the mortality rate of which is scarcely more than many influenza strains, but purposely designed to inflict fear in a populace due to its high degree of contagiousness and the unpredictability of the physiological profile on those who ultimately and tragically succumb to it. The time is upon us where the leaders in our Commonwealth, as well as the leaders of other states, are instilling fear in their businesses, schools, and their duly-elected school boards, churches, and other establishments with threat of heavy fines, imprisonment, losing their licenses, and closing the doors if they don't comply with the egregious mandates placed upon them. When the children in the schools of our Commonwealth are mandated to wear masks nine hours a day, a mask well-known to negatively affect the physical, psychological, and emotional well-being of many of those children, a mask which everybody knows has no statistical positive effect on preventing the virus, which everyone basically knows is a joke but sadly a tragic one, we must be very concerned. Many, myself included, now know this is a harbinger, these are a harbinger, and have little doubt the next mandates will be mandatory vaccines for all state and county employees, followed by the same requirement for our students in our schools. Restrictions on firearms is ongoing and will now only worsen. The time is here for our local governments and our citizens to wake up, stand up, and prepare to defend against this very type of tyrannical government that our forefathers envisioned could arise in a free society. The time has come to beat our plowshares into swords as citizens and prepare to defend the very freedoms that our forefathers and brave veterans of our armed forces have fought and died for and which we, our families, and all Americans now enjoy. To our county commissioners here today, all of you, thank you for entertaining and preparing to pass such an important resolution as the one before us today. It sends a clear message to all levels of government that Lycoming County will not participate in restricting the freedoms of our citizens, nor will we assist them in their endeavors to ever do so. Thank you all, gentlemen.
Amen.
Good job. Eric. Good morning.
Hello, Mark.
It's like old homewake here, should have a party. Captain Peters, if you listen to what he said, what's interesting is the U.S. Constitution uses the word infringed, but the Pennsylvania Constitution says questioned, shall not be questioned. We hear the stories of how we need to have gun restriction, gun restriction, gun restriction. It doesn't change anything. Gun restriction changes nothing in a way of violence, Captain Peters can tell you that. If you want to get the stats, go to Chicago and you'll find out how miserably it fails. Strongest gun laws in the country and one of the highest murder rates in the country, 20, 30, 40 murders on a weekend. That's not what fixes the problem. What fixes the problem is having laws that we enforce and that we follow through on and that there's crime and there's punishment. It's interesting that many of you are military, and obviously, I always thank you when I get to talk to one of you, but it's interesting that the military and law enforcement don't support gun restriction when we're at the thin blue line. You know, none of us ever support gun restriction, and we go on gun incidents every single day and handle gun incidents and get involved in shootings. We don't support it because it doesn't make sense and it doesn't keep us safe.
That's right.
So, I've gone on record long ago, and I'll go on record again. I support the Commissioner's proposed resolution. You won't find this sheriff enforce anything that the federal administration tries to shove down our throats because we have the right to bear arms. So, thank you.
I'm going to interrupt public comment at this time. We'll go back to it. We have a very special guest that we're here to honor. She has appointments that she has to leave for, so we're going to have a proclamation for Ms. Pennsylvania and Commissioner Maravito if you'll do that this time, then we'll go back to public comment. Thank you. Can you come to the podium? Thank you. And by the way, don't be fooled, they came here to see you today.
I got a little crowd today.
The other thing is just to make sure they don't think they want to see you somewhere. His father and mother, do you want to come up? The parents, I think you ought to come up. This is a proclamation. Whereas on July 31st, 2021, Ms. Sidney Jane Robertson, a resident of Lycoming County, Williamsport, Pennsylvania, graciously received her crown after winning the Miss Pennsylvania USA pageant. Sidney was born to Alan and Diane Robertson and is a sister to Holly and Lindsay Robertson. And whereas after modeling for several years, she began competing in pageants and has won several awards over the years, and in 2014 was crowned Miss Pennsylvania Team USA. And Sidney continues to have a winning attitude and carries herself with poise and humility in all competitions. And whereas Sidney is a graduate from Avita Institute and has devoted time to many charities such as Geisinger Children's Hospital, Make-A-Wish Foundation, our local LAPS, Local Animal Protection Society, and is embarking on her fifth year of working with Toys for Tots. All in all, she aspires to share hope and joy. And whereas we are proud of Sidney's goal-setting accomplishments and the high standards with which they are achieved, and we wish her continued success Signed, Lycoming County Commissioner Scott L. Mesker Chairman, Tony Armistere Vice Chairman, and Richard Maravito Secretary. Congratulations so much. We are very proud of you. And you are putting up on the map again.
And if I could add, this is just another stepping stone in your career. We were honored as a Board of Commissioners in the Association of County Commissioners to have another Miss America Pageant winner, Gina Rosetti.
Oh, right.
Okay, I believe that's how you pronounce her last name, from West Morgan. And she ended up becoming an attorney and then becoming West Morgan's County Commissioner, and she's doing a fabulous job. So, there's a lot of good things out there, and knowing you and your parents, we can expect good things. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And the role model that you're setting for all the young ladies out there, and just being involved in all the organizations, that inspires those girls to also maybe become involved in their volunteerism and some type of community efforts? So you are definitely an inspiration to those young ladies out there that will be looking up to you.
I don't speak lightly when I say that we really, really are proud of you and your family. You know, I remember when you came down to Harrisburg and from the state legislature, we recognized you for your Miss Team competition, and who thought that you would go? We thought, we prayed, we hoped, right? And you did it. And you did it. And you did it because you put your mind to it, because your family backed you up. And it's just wonderful. It really is, as Commissioners have said, both Commissioners. So, we're rooting for you. We know that your brain and your poise and your humility and your understanding and the wisdom you've acquired at a young age is going to carry you through that pageant, and you're going to win that Miss USA. Okay?
Yes. We've heard from the constituents here. What's your message to us?
Okay. I think first and foremost, not I think, what I know and what I've come to understand is that regardless of our beliefs and our personal opinions, the first thing we can do is respect one another and to listen, because at this point, there is a lot of divide, excuse the quiver, there is a lot of divide, and ultimately, I know a lot of people I don't agree with, however, I can sit down and I can have a conversation with them, and I can be open, and I can learn something, and even sitting here, I got a long way to go if I'm becoming a politician. Just sitting here and listening to all of you speak, I feel like I've already learned a lot. And so, going forward, listen to one another, respect one another, and be open, because I think ultimately, we all want to reunite and reconnect, because there's a lot of conflict going on, and ultimately, we're human, we're all the same, even if on the outside, we have differing opinions. So, that's what I'm going to carry to Miss USA, is what's going to bring us back together? What's going to unite us all, even if we have different opinions? I think we can still stand together.
Awesome.
I'm getting water for mascara today. Okay. We're going to take that. She has 12-inch heels on.
We're sore hat.
Let me take one more. There you go.
Okay, we give one to the parents.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations.
November 29th on Fox. If you watch it.
November 29th?
November 29th on Fox.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. And you don't have to sit to the rest. I know you have a lot of appointments, so please don't feel free to go, unless you'd like to listen to some more papers.
I'm good. I do need to go work for a living.
Okay, at this time, we'll go back to public comment for the agenda items only. Thank you for being patient.
No problem. My name is Tina McCloy. I live at 608 Arch Street in Montorsville, and I'm here to support the resolution on the Second Amendment. Couple of things I would just like to comment on, and kind of what our history is in this country that has caused us to be where we are today. When we fought the revolution, the Revolutionary War, I believe it was partly over the British had were going to try to take our guns. And had citizens of this country, the original 13 colonies, not had firearms at their disposal, we probably would still be sitting under a king's rule.
That's right.
And that was a key component of why we won that revolution and the Revolutionary War, because all of us were already armed. In World War II, I believe there was a deterrent that kept Japan from attacking this country, or the mainland anyway, is because when they were contemplating that plan, someone told them that there was a gun behind every door in this country, and they opted not to follow through with that plan. If we hadn't had a gun behind every door, theoretically, we might be under Japanese rule today. And a couple of comments that have already been made about, look what's happening to Australia. They gave up their firearms, and they have no way now to defend themselves except for illegal possession of firearms. And so, I'm here to support this resolution, that our county have the distinction, being a sanctuary county, in supporting the Second Amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move up to accounts payable this time?
So, 2.0 act, accounts payable cash requirements report with grant requirements.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to present the accounts payable cash requirements report for invoices due through October 6, 2021, to be paid on September 29, 2021, in the amount of $1,413,862.22. We had another late addition right before I came down today for another hazard mitigation grant program buyout for $155,847.93, which is 100% grant funded.
Okay, any questions on accounts payable?
Well, I'm going to make a comment. This is the second week in a row, and we've tried to resolve this problem within the county a number of times. For all our department heads, we need to respect the work that our fiscal and our budget department does. So, there's timeframes to be submitting these invoices. If it's not something major, then you need to stop submitting these at the last moment, because when you do, they don't like to refuse anyone, but they're doing other work, and then they have to stop that work to put this on the agenda, which is already complete. So, please, please, in the future, do not throw last-minute items on this cash requirements report. Now, I'll go to page 14, where you see Wood Environmental, and Wood is one of our consultants for the levy project, and to date, since I think it's 2017 is when the county made a commitment that we were going to help the four, the city and the four counties.
And we've only been paying this particular vendor since 2020, when I went in and looked.
2020, okay. But in 2017, I believe, the last Board of Commissioners made a commitment to do whatever we could to help these communities with the levy and the recertification of it, or we're going to lose businesses. And if you heard some of the cost associated with flood insurance to some of these businesses that if it wasn't recertified, they'd move out. We'd have nothing. And so, it's very important. But as I was reviewing the invoices, I did text a couple people to find out what work was actually done so far, and it's all survey, it's all construction, it's all engineering. So, it's a long process to even start getting the work done. And I want to thank everybody for their patience, and especially the people who are planning this project, so.
You know, while we're on the topic of the levies, since we have a good number of people here, at some point, we have to, as a community, find a way to pay for the ongoing maintenance of the levy. Why do I say that? Because we've been able to get state dollars. I don't know if there's some federal dollars in there too, but certainly state dollars. But part of getting that is conditioned on the local community taking responsibility. Now, when I say that, I don't just mean the city of Williamsport and Old Lycoming and South Williamsport and Loyal Sock, which have all put up a lot of taxpayer money. I actually mean the entire county, because even though you may not live right next to the levy, the levy, 80% of all of the tax, all of the revenue in the county comes out of the businesses behind that levy. So that means that even though you may think, I'm retired, my life isn't touched by it, if you're drawing attention from a local business that's still in operation, that local business is depending on the levy. If a business gets hit, as Commissioner Misere said, with a $300,000 flood insurance, they begin to say to themselves, should we really expand here, or should we go to a community where we don't have to pay 300,000? So, one of the things that we've thought about, and actually, I think that Commissioner Misere has been thinking a lot about this, is that every community has flooding issues, whether you're on the Loyal Sock or the Lycoming Creek, everywhere we have flooding. And so, maybe when we seek to find a way to fund this levy, we also find a way to put some of the resources into other communities that might not be right next to the levy, but also have their own flooding issues, separate from what FEMA does and so forth, because FEMA comes in after the fact. So I think it's just important for us to think about that. The other thing I just want to point out is that although it sounds like a lot of money, 1.3 million, half of the revenue is coming out of the land, or half of the payments are coming out of the landfill. 540,000 is coming out of landfill. The landfill is an asset to the county. It puts $2 million into the general fund every year. That's $2 million less that we have to raise. It's equivalent to just under half a mil of real estate taxes. So, and then another almost 400,000 is county general. It's obviously all of its money, and all of it's important that we watch how we spend it, but it's important to always recognize that everything that goes on at the landfill is paid for by landfill revenues, employee salaries, healthcare, pension, everything is paid by the revenues that we charge there. And actually, most of the ways comes from areas outside the county.
This time, you have a motion to accept the accounts payable?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
So carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Personnel actions with Roxanne Greco.
Where are you running?
Good morning, Commissioners. In the District Attorney's Office, Matthew Lewevkovich has a full-time replacement assistant District Attorney, pay grade ADA, $53,543.83 annually, effective October 3, 2021. In domestic relations, Carmen Veltusen has a full-time replacement clerk, pay grade four, $14.09 an hour, effective October 11, 2021.
Any comments or questions on these two action items? Personal actions? Motion?
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
So carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Personnel actions with Roxanne Greco.
Where are you running?
Good morning, Commissioners. In the District Attorney's Office, Matthew Lewevkovich has a full-time replacement assistant District Attorney, pay grade ADA, $53,543.83 annually, effective October 3, 2021. In domestic relations, Carmen Veltusen has a full-time replacement clerk, pay grade four, $14.09 an hour, effective October 11, 2021.
Any comments or questions on these two action items? Personal actions? Motion?
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
So carried.
Thank you.
Were recessed Commissioners meeting at this time for a Board of Assessments and Provisions?
Brooke Wright is here.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to recommend approvals for real estate exemptions, and also recommend denial for the real estate exemption, which the owners will speak on that one. The first three properties, Urban Mennonite Ministries, Omega Orthodox Presbyterian Church, these part, all three are churches. They only file any exemption because of the name change, so there's no loss in taxes on these three properties. The next property is Hope Community Church, located at 528 South Main Street in Muncie Borough. This is also a new church. The next property is Cottage Ministries, Inc., at 3111 Route 287 Highway in Mithman Township. This is a church ministry which is similar to Camp Sesquah. The next three property are transitional living centers. The 900 West Third Street is a halfway house for females. The 309 Maynard Street is a halfway house for females. The 616 West Edwin Street is a halfway house for males. The next two properties are FEMA buyouts. The first one is Muncie Borough at 211 North Market Street. The next one is Loyal Sock Township at 1830 Horneville Road. The next property is Camp Sesquah at 265 Slacks Run Road. This is a community center, is what they are turning this into. Previously, it was owned by Oasis of Hope, which used it for sex trafficking, and they sold it to Camp Sesquah last year, and it was on the tax rules for last year. The next property is Messiah Lutheran Church, 131 West Southern Avenue. They are allowing Family Promise to use this house for their family homelessness prevention program. Family Promise intends to buy the house next year. There is no rent being exchanged between either one of them. They are just allowing them to use the house. The next property is Citizen Hoes Company of Jersey Shore, 1208 Locust Street. This is going to be used as a training and meeting facility. It is a house and everything, but they are using it for training and meeting facility, and they will intend to tear it down to build a new structure down the road, is what they said. The next property is Community Options, Inc., at 1564 Mile Drive. This is a residence for individuals with disabilities. This also used to be owned by Step, and they sold it to Community Options. These ones are my recommendation for approval. My last one is George and Linda Whaley at 675 677 Campbell Street. They have filed paperwork to be a micro-nation at their property, which does not fall underneath the criteria for exemption. They are not a 501(c)(3), they cannot get nonprofit status, but since I am recommending denying it, I asked him to come here today to speak, for you to hear him. So, Mr. Whaley, if you would come up here, please.
Hello. First, my name is George Whaley. I live at 677 Campbell Street. I own the property at 675 Campbell Street. I want to say thank you all for letting me be here, being a public servant as you are. I appreciate you all, and let you know that I come in peace and I come in respect. Okay? Anything that I say here, I'm just trying to exercise my rights.
Family Promise intends to buy the house next year. There is no rent being exchanged between either one of them. They are just allowing them to use the house. The next property is Citizen Ho's Company of Jersey Shore, 1208 Locust Street. This is going to be used as a training and meeting facility. It is a house and everything, but they are using it for training and meeting facility. And they will intend to tear it down to build a new structure down the road, is what they said. The next property is Community Options, Inc. at 1564 Mile Drive. This is a residence for individuals with disabilities. This also used to be sold, owned by Step, and they sold it to Community Options. These ones are my recommendation for approval. My last one is George and Linda Whaley at 675-677 Campbell Street. They have filed paperwork to be a micro-nation at their property, which does not fall underneath the criteria for exemption. They are not a 501(c)(3), they cannot get nonprofit status. But since I am recommending denying it, I asked him to come here today to speak, for you to hear him. So Mr. Whaley, if you would come up here, please.
Hello. First, my name is George Whaley. I live at 677 Campbell Street. I own the property at 677, 675 Campbell Street. I want to say thank you all for letting me be here, being a public servant since you are. I appreciate you all, and let you know that I come in peace and I come in respect. Okay? Anything that I say here, I'm just trying to exercise my rights. First of all, I'll let you know that I'm a U.S. national, and I'm claiming under those rights. Yes, I did declare my property a micro-nation, which I have the right to do. Okay, also, what she probably doesn't know either, I have a limited liability corporation. But since then, I no longer do business with the limited liability corporation. I'm now a 508(c)(1)A out of, out of my house, which is a little bit different from a 50, whatever the other one is, which is still faith-based, but it's a little different. It doesn't have as many government controls to it, whatever. I mean, I can give you paperwork on that.
I need paperwork and stuff.
You'll, you'll get it. I, I sent it to Nicholas Grimes. All right, well, he's the one that issued the license for the, for Good Faith Management LLC. That's why I sent it to him, because the license is no longer in effect. I don't, I don't operate out of that.
That's the same.
All right. That's, he, he sent it to me. I have here, if you like, I have authentication papers for my micro-nation, so you know what?
I have all the paperwork.
Did I send you this? I don't think I sent you this.
We sent it to the Treasuries Office here with the county, and they sent it up to our office, because our office is the one who filed the exemption through the Treasuries Office.
Okay, so, all right, excuse me. So like I said, I, I also filed with the state with the non, unincorporated 508(c)(1)A. Paperwork is filed with the state, $70 fee paid, everything. So I would think that alone qualifies me. But just in case it doesn't, like I said, I come in respect, whatever. I know that because I'm a U.S. national, my family is too. It falls under the foreign, the immunities, the foreign states jurisdiction, the Vienna Convention. I have all the paperwork here for you guys to view. Okay, the jurisdiction for foreign states, I'm actually a diplomat in my own state, in my own micro-nation. I mean, I, I really am. Like I said, I, I'm being very respectful. Also, I am an Aboriginal American, what some people would say, not a Native American, but one of the first Americans to come here, and I got paperwork to prove who I am. So what I'm, what I'm also saying is I also found, and I have my passport here, four-star national, about to be a five-star national. I have my ID, excuse me, it says I'm a U.S. national. There's, there's a lot of things that, that maybe you don't know that, that I fall under. And like I said, I don't, I don't want to be disrespectful in any way, so just... Also, I just want to remind everybody that Article Six of the U.S. Constitution, public officials are bound, bound by oath and affirmation. What it says in the Constitution, they got to go by it. And I ain't saying that they're not, because they don't have anything to do with it. But I just want to let you know that you guys are bound by oath and affirmation of the United States Constitution, Article Six, right here. Okay? And now, I'll go a little further in the saying. I have, I have all my declarations in, my declaration of identity, every, all the paperwork that I need for you. And the only thing, I have case law here, um, this is just some of it. Gary versus Winthrop, the Supreme Court case that's similar to mine, stating that the state may not tax a person's property or interest, which are not within the territorial jurisdiction, and is subject only to applicable and controlling federal law. State taxation is authorized, limited to, regulated by the state constitution, and the statutes are acted thereunder. This is just a lot of paperwork that I have that I can submit to you, and, you know, hopefully you'll see what I'm talking about. And lastly, what I say that I, I mean no disrespect, and I don't. But I, I have to say this because I have to exercise my rights, is what I, what I am. I, if, if this is denied, I am prepared to do a criminal complaint. I'm just saying. Okay? I have many statutes here for concealment, concealment, and removal, basically falsifying records, frauds and swindles. I got crimes to defend, just forgery and fraudulent practices, fictitious obligations. This is all based upon the tax stuff. And schemes of artificial defraude. I, I don't want to go that route, because I don't think anybody here is trying to do me wrong. I just don't, I don't believe she has the correct paperwork. But I am prepared to go that route with all, all respect to everybody. And that's basically, I said, I think if I could, if I'm able to submit, give to her that she knows that on my record, it's a 508(c)(1)A, and these other things about me being a national, everything, I think I can, I feel confident that I can get that decision reversed.
Mr. Commissioner, I, I was going to move to table the last one. The 508(c)(1)A can, in some circumstances, be taxed exempt. But we don't, I think that at this time, rather than trying to figure it out at the meeting...
Yes, I was going to make recommendations after table.
Table, table that one and deal with the foregoing ones, and then the gentleman can provide the documentation.
I did have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, so when you presented your, your paperwork to her, was it within the time of appeal?
No, I, I think the only thing that she has is, is that I was a micro-nation, and she says that doesn't fall under, which, which it does though, and I can prove that. But since then, I have done the 508(c)(1)A. So I don't know what you mean by the time of appeal, all unknowns.
I don't have the 501(c)(1)A paperwork. But please keep in mind, Commissioners, if you deny it today, he does have the right to file it with the court of justice within 30 days. I discussed this with my solicitor, Mike Wiley, also. And if Mr. Smith is on the phone, if he could pipe in about the 501(c)(1)A and what his opinion is also.
I'll say respectfully that I, I got my paperwork intact, and I know, I know what it is. And I'm not being disrespectful. I really am, I come in peace, I have no, I'm not belligerent, non-combatant, but I do know what I'm talking about here. And if you can deny it, but it's just going to, it's just going to come back.
Brooke, the solicitor is on the line, but if, if we table it till next week, to, it, it, either way, he has the right of appeal to the Commonwealth court.
Yes.
Right. So whether we do it today or we do it next week, he still has the right of appeal.
Yes.
I mean, unless, Mr. Solicitor, you've got a recommendation that you feel pretty good about now, or...
Well, I'm pretty comfortable that Mr. Wiley's recommendation is what I would adopt as our opinion, but there's no harm in putting it off a week, allowing the two of us to review it one more time and give a definitive opinion back to Brooke and the Commissioners.
Yes, that way I'll give both counselors to review all of Mr. Wiley's paperwork.
Right.
And give him the opportunity to, everything would be reviewed by him.
Can I ask you guys to consider, if I ever come back here, can you do it when I'm off of work? I mean, I get off at two.
Does, does it have to be at a public meeting?
Yes, it does. It has to be at a public meeting.
Yeah, the exemption would have to be approved at a public meeting.
But it doesn't necessarily...
You don't need to be here.
You don't need to be here.
You'd be notified of the results.
I mean, we've heard your position, and, and we'll look at the documents, so...
Yeah. We want to take time, give you the respectful of the documents.
Should I send those documents to her?
Uh, yeah, if you give them to her, then she can give them to Mr. Wiley.
Okay, I'll make sure you have them tomorrow.
Yeah.
Everything, make sure I have everything.
Well, is it one to go to the office now, the girls will copy it?
I know, but I gotta...
Oh, you gotta go back to work?
Yeah, I gotta go back to work and make sure I got everything in it.
All right.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. There's a motion on the floor.
Yes. Motion to table.
I'll second that motion.
All favors say aye.
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 Yeah, I only have the paperwork on my micro-nation, that's all he submitted with the exemption.
Okay.
I'll take a look at that.
Okay. And rest of the exemptions, do you have any questions on those?
No, the only thing is, I, I think there was maybe a mis-- I don't want someone from the public to misunderstand. You said it was owned, the one that camps us, the one was owned by Oasis of Hope. And I think you said it was involved with sex trafficking. You didn't mean that there was sex trafficking going on, and there were victims.
Sex trafficking people that they brought in, sorry for the confusion.
Okay.
You know, but as, as we look at some of the appeals, and...
These are exemptions.
I mean exemptions, uh, exemptions and, and appeals at times. It is alarming, over the past decade that I've been here, how many exemptions there are. I mean, I, I believe we have like almost five-point-some billion NSS values, right? Or six billion dollars.
I can't tell you that. I could tell you there's about 2,036 real estate exemptions. And of course, the big properties, you know, the hospital, like in college, Penn College, are the majority of them being exempted.
But whenever you see exemptions made, uh, that means the burden is on governments to either cut government, cut services, or, or tax. And that burden is becoming more and more difficult on seniors, especially with no, you know, with no income, you know, other than what they receive in their social security pensions. So we have to address this issue, not only from a county government point of view, but legislatively. We've had two situations where I feel sad for Mark Anderson, your collector. I mean, he's devastated by, you know, having to sell somebody's home because they can't afford the taxes. And we should all be devastated, we should all be alarmed, especially when it's no follow-up.
You know, and to follow up on that, especially since we have constituents here. When I was in the legislature, there was a bill that was floating around that said, "If an organization that's tax-exempt pays its top officers more than five," or you pick the number, "six times the median household income, then they have to pay certain funds on behalf of the taxes." Now, the question we have to ask ourselves is, an organization like UPMC, where its top executive in Pittsburgh, I think the last time I read, is making eight to nine million dollars a year. I mean, at some point, people have to stand up as voters and say, "You know what? We cannot carry the tax burden." And I respect what, what these organizations do, and I don't single out just UPMC. I'm talking about the fact that more and more properties, as Commissioner Masser has said, and organizations are claiming a nonprofit status. And they may pay their top officers $500,000 a year, $300,000, a million dollars. And the reality is that if they have money to pay the top people that, then they have money to put more into the community. And, and quite frankly, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it goes along with all the rights that you all spoke about this morning. You know, one of the rights is not to be taxed out of existence. And, and by the way, I don't say that meaning that we're spending money wildly. I say that there are needs that go on in the community, and we need everybody to pay their fair share, you know? So I, I think that, that at some point, we have to start to have a conversation about that as a community, and not, and not just continue to, to pile on. These, these are small churches that are not, that are not, you know, making it. But they're, they're, they're huge organizations, huge organizations. And, and it's, it's an issue that we have to start to talk about and have conversation about. And it doesn't mean that we vilify them, and it doesn't mean that we don't appreciate what they do for the community, but it means that when you're paying salaries of a million or a million and a half a year, or eight or 10 million dollars, that you have money to put into schools, you have money to put into the police force, you have money to put into all of them. So anyway, I, I concur with your thoughts on that.
Okay, a motion to accept the revisions for exemptions.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All favors say aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioners.
Yes, will we convene at this time the Commissioners' meeting?
Moving on to 5.0 informational items. Jenny Pachianos on the line, she has 5.1.
Hi, ma'am, Commissioners.
Hi, Jenny.
Hi, Jenny.
Hi. So we are seeking projects and programs to include in the county's November 19th application to PHFA, so that's the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency for Fair Funding. So Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement Fund. So these fair funds through PHFA is funded through Marcella's shale gas revenues generated here in Lycoming County that supports the creation, rehabilitation, and supportive of affordable housing in the state. To date, the county has secured over $10.6 million in fair funds for projects in our county. And so we are looking for applications to include in our, in the county's application. Applications for projects in the county are due to us on October 15th. And additional information is available on our website at lyco.org/housing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
5.2 is Jason New York's for an informational item. Jason?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
First off, Commissioner Marbido, I'd like to thank you for the kind words, for the support for what RMS is contributing to the general fund. As we, as we've showed you and given you our 20-year plan, I would just like to tell you how much we appreciate all three Commissioners' support and what we're doing, because we are trying to make a difference. Commissioners, the informational item before you, we're going to be going out to bid for a landfill scale, inbound scale needs to be rebuilt. We're going to go out to bid for a new platform, load cells, so forth. The bid will be out on Penn Bid. The announcements will be in the paper October 1st and the 5th. It's due October 22nd, and then the bids will be opened at your meeting on October 26th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is this something you have in the 2022 budget, or 2021?
This is a 2021 budgeted item. I apologize, I should have told you that, yes. That is a 2021 budgeted item.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, action items, starting with 6.1, Nancy Akleis here.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna jump to 6.9.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Nancy, but we'll put you next, Dr. Se-- we have a large amount of people here for 6.9, so if you want to vote on that first, and then we'll move to 6.1 right after that. Director?
Commissioners, I unequivocally seek your approval to adopt Resolution 2021-12 to signify the Board of Commissioners' support for the Second Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America.
Yeah, why don't you read it?
Resolution 2021-12, a resolution signifying the Board of Commissioners' support for the United States and Pennsylvania constitutions, including the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution. Whereas, the Second Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America states, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." And whereas, the Supreme Court of the United States of America in District of Columbia versus Heller, 554 U.S., 570, 2008, affirmed that the Second Amendment protects an individual right to keep and bear arms that is not connected in any way with service in a militia. And whereas, the Supreme Court of the United States of America in the United States versus Miller, 307 U.S., 174, 1939, stated that firearms that are part of ordinary military equipment with use that could contribute to the common defense are protected by the Second Amendment. And whereas, Article One, Section 21 of the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania provides, "The right of citizens to bear arms in defense of themselves in the state shall not be questioned." And whereas, Article One, Section 25 of the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania provides that, "To guard against transgressions of the higher powers which we have delegated, we declare that everything in this article is expected, accepted out of the general powers of the government and shall forever remain inviolate." And whereas, the Fourteenth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America, "No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws." Now, there... Now therefore, intending the foregoing paragraphs, to be part hereof, the Lico County Commissioners proclaim and fully affirm their support of the rights afforded to the citizens of the United States and Pennsylvania's constitutions, including the right of the citizens to keep and bear arms. Further that, the United, or, excuse me, Lico County Council wishes to express opposition to any law or regulation, be it federal or state, that unconstitutionally restricts the rights of citizens under the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution or Article 1, Section 21 of the Pennsylvania Constitution to keep and bear arms. And further that, the Lico County Commissioners wish to express their intent to stand for Second Amendment rights and oppose any effort to unconstitutionally restrict such rights of the citizens to keep and bear arms. Now, therefore be it resolved, that Section 1, the above recitals are true and correct and incorporated in this resolution. Section 2, the Lico County Commissioners hereby declare Lico County as a Second Amendment County, and as such shall celebrate, promote, and preserve for the people of and in Lico County their right to bear arms as guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Section 3, we the people of Lico County, Pennsylvania, through this resolution hereby declare our rights, our freedom, and our liberty as guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Section 4, the Lico County Commissioners encourage all Lico County municipal police departments to honor the Second Amendment in their enforcement capacity. Be it further resolved, that the Lico County Commissioners petition the Pennsylvania General Assembly and the Governor to likewise declare Pennsylvania's Second Amendment sanctuary Commonwealth. Now therefore, the Lico County Board of Commissioners on this 28th day of September 2021 hereby approves this resolution. Sign. Scott Madsgaard, Chairman, Tony Armasaire, Vice Chairman, Rick Meridio, Secretary.
Well, we haven't signed it yet, because we have to vote on it.
I am totally in support of this resolution, and as we see other states, and I believe that states are, should be sovereign, and more sovereign, and stop relying off the federal government. But as you start to see gun control measures in other states, red flag laws are popping up across the United States, where it gives the power of a family member, I have not read anything beyond a family member or for a police department, the ability to go in without a warrant and confiscate guns, when they believe that the person is dangerous. Okay, this is not about taking guns away from a sane person, but what the slippery slope is, is that it allows someone to say, without, without any evidence, to say this person is dangerous. And that's, that's a great concern, one that should be debated and should be looked at, and you know, in my opinion, never passed.
Amen.
Amen.
So, but that's just one example of what they're trying to do now. It is, it is a hot topic, and, and one where, you know, a gentleman, Mr. Whaley, says today that we, we should uphold the Constitution. Well, I'm looking at this federal government, and there's many things that I believe are unconstitutional that's happening today. Where, who's to stop this? So now more than ever, protections for our citizens, for gun control, or to allow them to have their weapons is very vital to the security of our nation. I hope, as you all hope, that it never comes down to violence, that it never comes down to a civil war. But as I was growing up, and I saw in the AP News pictures of the Palestinians and the Israelis fighting, there's one vivid picture that I'll never forget. The Palestinians were throwing rocks at people that were armed with guns. Who's going to win?
Thank you, Commissioner.
So I didn't grow up here, and I didn't grow up hunting, or owning a gun, or shooting guns. It was a different place in the United States. My mother became a widow at a young age, so I didn't have a father who then taught me, as I see so many fathers in our community, teaching their kids how to hunt, how to shoot guns, and how to respect guns, and respect that guns can kill people. And frankly, my mother raising five kids was probably, if I went to her and said, hey, Mom, I want to learn how to shoot, she probably would have said, kid, there's work to be done. But that's okay. But when I came here, and I began to understand the different cultural and, or, or community feelings and about guns, about constituents who said, Rick, you know, these laws that say you can only buy one or two guns a month, I go to a gun show, and I might buy five or six guns because I want to have them in my collection, you know, or because I, I like them, or, and I began to understand, and I talked to people, I talked to Commissioner Maser, I talked to other people, constituents, about what the guns meant, both in terms of their feelings of personal safety and security, and in terms of their recreational, and quite frankly, many people hunt and eat the food that they shoot, right? So I began to understand a different perspective. When I was in the legislature, we were making revisions to the Castle Doctrine, and one of the things I initiated was teach-ins, where we brought gun owners and people interested in guns up to Tripoli Triggers, and we brought in the District Attorney. It was the first time it hadn't been done. It's now being done by representatives all over, I see, the, and that's fine, that's great. But what we did is, we tried, I was concerned that constituents understood that their right to carry and own a gun coexisted with other laws. The last thing I wanted someone to do was to think that they were doing something under the operation of the Castle Doctrine that ended up getting them indicted. And that's why I undertook those educational programs, and, and I think that they've been a great success. We have cycled, I know that in my time in the legislature, we cycled a lot of people through them, as have other representatives. So one of the things today, and I, I'm voting in favor of this resolution today, and I'm voting in the spirit that Sidney Robertson left with us, which is that if we truly want to understand each other, we have to stand in each other's shoes and view the world from the perspective in those shoes. And sometimes we may be in shoes that are the wrong size, or the wrong color, or the wrong sex, or the wrong gender, or the wrong way people in our circle love or respect other people, including people who feel strongly about the Second Amendment. The Second Amendment is no less important than the First Amendment, than the Fourteenth Amendment, all of them. You can't say I support the Constitution and the amendments, but wait, I don't support the Second Amendment. And you can't say I don't support the Second Amendment without understanding that within it are implied rights that come through the Fourteenth Amendment, which is discussed in this resolution. And I say that because we have to understand that there are other people in this country who believe that they have rights that come implied through the Fourteenth Amendment. Look, at the end of the day, we may not agree with each other, and we may not all own guns, and we may not all do that, or do, do what, you know, whatever you want to do with a gun, or what other people do. We have to be able to live together. We have to understand and believe that our right on the Second Amendments, or that any of the other amendments, coexists with our obligation. You know, my mother raised us saying, hey, kid, you have rights, but you have obligations too. You have obligations, you have a right in this family to do this, this, and this, but you have an obligation in this family to give back and to do that. So I, I think this is great that we're doing this, I think, I hope that we do it and try to move ourselves to a higher level of understanding and appreciation for all of the folks in our community. I hope that we don't end up going down a path like so many other countries, mentioned by my colleague, where we constantly are at war with each other, because quite frankly, at the end of the day, nobody wins, you know, nobody wins. Passing this resolution doesn't mean we're going in that direction, and I want people in the community who read this and say, oh my gosh, what's going, that's not what this resolution is about. This resolution is about protecting people's rights under the Constitution, just likely we respect other rights under the Constitution, and we have to understand that. And then the flip side is that those of us who support this resolution have to understand that we need to be supportive of other people too.
Sure.
Thank you very much, I'm thankful that we're doing this.
We've seen how much America's changed over the last few years, and as you turn on the news, you wonder if it resembles anything that we grew up as. And recently heard a poll at a university, majority of the young students think the Constitution's outdated, we have to have a new document. This document was founded by our forefathers, and it's been the test of time through wars, it has been fought for, people's lives, so we have these freedoms. I am a proactive person, I don't like to react. And when you sit back and let things happen, and you're often reacting, and that happens often, we, we wait for a disaster to happen before we do something. We know about it, we put our heads in the sand, and we say, yeah. Now, for instance, a traffic lady is needed at this corner, we talked about it for years, until there's a fatality at that intersection. And then something gets done after a disaster, a tragedy has happened. We're not going to let that happen Lico County. That Constitution that this country was signed on, the Bill of Rights, Commissioner Meridio said, every one of those amendments are vital, they've all been fought for, and they are all a collective group of good. I'll quote what President Reagan said here, which hits it right on the head. "Freedom is never more than one generation away from its extinction. We didn't pass it to our children in the bloodstream, it must be fought for, protected, and handed on for them to do the same, or one day we will spend our sunset years telling our children, and our children's children, what it was like once in the United States when men were free." That couldn't be any more perfect. It was prophetic, it's like a prophet said, it's happening today. So we're going to vote on this resolution today, and it's, I'm glad that, I want to thank the District Attorney for working with us, our solicitor, to find the proper language and put it into, into words that we feel is, is effective. And so it's important that we do this, and we thank each one of you for attending today and expressing your views as we vote on this. Thank you.
I just want to re- I think it's a powerful message that the DA and the sheriff-
Yes.
-is on board with this resolution. It does mean unity, and I think it has a lot of comfort as far as an elected official as well, voting on the resolution. So thank you, Sheriff, and I want to thank the DA as well.
Yeah, I, I reiterate that, I want to thank the DA and the sheriff, and the DA, the fact that he put so much time into this, you all ought to thank him all.
Yes.
He really did, I mean, he really- Because, you know, honestly, we, we've been meeting and talking, and we, we didn't want to do something that was not going to be able to be something that we can look people straight in the eye about and say, hey, and so we thank him. We thank you all for your efforts, honestly, the constituents who came to meet with us, and who called us and had Zoom meetings with us, you know, honestly, if you hadn't brought it to us, we probably wouldn't have done it, not because we're opposed to it, but because we have so many things going on, and this is how government works, you come to, you petition the government, and hopefully the government responds, so.
You know, and I want to add to that, groups such as yours, the Lico County Patriots, and the Patriots all over this country right now, the red flag has, you know, come up many times, and now you're responding. And by your diligence, by your actions, to bring awareness to our elected officials, you know, there's, we do many things in the course of a day, and it's not always about guns, you know, it's about, you know, administration. And without your organization, and you know, Dan, you're the one that called me first and proposed unordnance, I admire you for all your efforts, and the entire group, okay? You're only getting stronger, and you, you are starting to set an anchor here in Lico County. And I want to thank you for all your efforts, and for many other things that you are currently trying to address. And we appreciate your time as well, to be here means a lot, not only to us, but for, for the citizens that are always working, they're always working, they don't have enough time to get involved, even though they agree with you, so thanks again.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion on Act Item 6.9?
I'll move to approve Resolution 2021-12.
I'll second.
All papers say aye?
Aye.
So carry.
You all can stay for the rest of the meeting, although I bet you have some things to do. Commissioner Merrick, United States of America, by line.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it.
Praying for you.
God bless you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director McDermott has one other act.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And if we can, thank you. We can let him finish, then he has to meet with the District Attorney.
We have a 6.8, Director.
Commissioner, seeking your approval on Resolution 2021-11. This is the appointment of a new assistant solicitor, and that new assistant solicitor is William E. Baney, and he's appointed as assistant solicitor at the rate of $100 per hour effective August 1, 2021.
Okay. Have a motion to accept this Resolution 2021-11?
I'll move to approve.
And I'll second that.
All papers say aye?
Aye.
So carry.
We welcome Mr. Baney to Lico County, and to the solicitor, to McCormick for Lico County.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. I have to jump back to Act Item 6.1, Nancy, thank you for being patient.
I'm going to come through.
You can come up to the podium, please.
Juvenile probation is asking for your approval for renewal for Delphi Village, which provides a wide range of services for the treatment of delinquent males and females. Services can be, but not limited to, secure treatment centers, intensive supervision group homes, sex offender group homes, community-based short-term group homes, and specialized independent living. And as you can see from the, the fact sheet there, that there's a whole range of programs and different- and different costs and everything, so.
Yeah.
Did my work with them and got them down as best I could.
But you do very well.
I try.
Do we have anybody at their facility right now?
Yes, we probably have five kids right now, all on different programs.
And where are they located?
Depends. Um, Delphi, I think-
Counter-spoor, isn't it?
One of them is up, up the road here, which is a Cogan Station, which is lots of quick.
Okay.
That one's up there. Um, I'm a little bit longer, not picking up racks, it's been up at Delphi.
So, Musk is part of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On your favor, say aye.
Aye.
So carried, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too.
6.2, Adrian Stahl is on the line for voting on agreement between Lycoming County and Robert Hoppa. Are you on the line?
I am, thank you.
Good morning, Adrian.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, I am here to request your approval of a professional services agreement between Attorney Robert Hoppa for his, in the county, or his representation of, I hope I don't butcher their name, Kiyafa Anderson, with regard to drug delivery resulting in death and other related charges retroactive to August 11th, 2021, hourly compensation of $100, not to exceed $25,000. And the reason for this contract is because this case is a conflict for the Public Defender's Office. So they reached out to the courts to let us know it's a conflict and then we appoint counsel, to handle that, private counsel.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On your favor, say aye.
Aye.
So carried, thank you, Adrian.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you too.
6.3, Jason Fink, here to ask for approval on a cooperation agreement.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning.
Thank you for your patience.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brought to you this morning from LCIDA, a resolution for Bald Bird's Brewery, who received a $1 million RACP grant in the last round of RACP funding to be able to further their efforts over in Jersey Shore and redeveloping the former building that they had bought, about 157,000 square feet that they had that was the former Woolbridge Warehouse, that now is a brewery along with a event venue, along with a couple of other amenities that they have there. Very excited about this development and the investments being made there.
Who, who are the principals in the-
Uh, Joe Farrar, Joey Farrar is his name. He is the principal. He grew up over in the Jersey Shore area, went to Lycoming College, got into banking, did a deal with a brewery a number of years ago, got hooked on the whole business, ended up walking away from the banking business and ended up, this is his third brewery that he's opened, the largest by far though. He's out of, he's got two breweries down in the southeastern part of the state outside of Philly.
Well, we thank him for investing in the community and for taking an old warehouse and turning it into productive use.
It is very exciting, yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Here are motions, accept.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On your favor, say aye.
Aye.
So carried, thank you, Jason.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks for the work you're doing, Jason, in the community.
Absolutely.
Jerry Kennedy has 6.4 and 6.5.
Good morning, Jerry.
Good morning, Commissioners. This morning before you are two renewals, both 2021 budgeted items. The first is a Albert Sensor, it's a network monitoring device that's actually used and provided by the federal government, the Cybersecurity Infrastructure Security Agency, at a cost of $10,680 annually.
Okay. Is that in the 2021 budget?
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion to accept?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On your favor, say aye.
Aye.
So carried.
The second one is the LSIR North Point Software Licensing and Maintenance Agreement. This is a 2021 budgeted item as well. This allows essentially adult probation to run diagnostics on their clients at a cost
Okay. Any questions or comments? Here are your motions, accept.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On your favor, say aye.
Aye.
So carried, thank you, Jerry.
And Jerry, that fishing exercise you did worked on me.
I know.
(laughing) That's the first one. Yeah, I was asking for help.
6.6, Jenny Picciano. And Jenny, you also have 6.7.
Yep. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
6.6 is a vote for the American Rescue Workers 2021 Fair Subrecipient Agreement for the Rental Assistance Program in the amount of $100,000.
Okay. We can take both these as a-
Oh, okay. And then 6.7 is a vote for seeking approval for the Transitional Living Centers 2021 Fair Subrecipient Agreement for the Master Leasing Program in the amount of $200,000. And both are budgeted items with fair funding.
Okay. Any comments or questions on either item? Here are your done, have a motion, accept action item 6.6 and 6.7.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On your favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Thank you, Jenny.
And Jenny, Jenny was at a YWCA meeting last night and just like so many of our dedicated workers here in the county, they're attending meetings, you know, well after 6, 7, 8 o'clock at night and it was nice to see you there as, as part of that group.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Commissioner, comments?
Did we have any public comment on the 6.9?
Several.
Okay.
Do you want me to-
Let's take any from the audience first and, okay.
3.3.
I went like this.
Oh. I'm just here to comment on item 3.1, the DA Personnel Action, and remind the Commissioners of Section 1620 of the County Code, the Hiring, Discharging and Supervising Rights and Obligations are vested in the judges and other county officers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do you want me to just read down through them?
Yes, please.
All right, so Jeff Willtry is the person's name. A private company renewing a video or transcript is not a violation of anyone's First Amendment rights.
Okay.
Citation needed from an epidemiologist or qualified medical expert about COVID-19 being an engineered virus.
Okay.
Then he says, I'm all for shifting the narrative from calling NRA members patriots to calling all people who pay their fair share of taxes patriots. And then MCG, MCG is most, says it is most unfortunately that the translations from the spoken word to the written transcripts appearing on the YouTube screen are inaccurate and sometimes say the opposite of what is being spoken.
We, we'd have to look into that. That's a problem we've heard before, that when we're speaking, it's going up on the YouTube screen, but-
We'll, we'll, we'll have Jerry look into that service again. We thought we had it straight now.
And then Aaron Neeser Page, it make sense, I think she means it makes sense to restrict those with mental illnesses and those with the propensities to commit crimes should be evaluated before issuing a permit to bear arms. Aaron Neeser Vingham. And then Aaron Neeser Page again says there should be meditative training and safe storage and usage. Then MCG, MCG says, God bless all our Commissioners and bless those in Lycoming County who put them all into office. Jeff Willtry says, I hope our Commissioners' dedications to preserving people's rights extend to preserving women's reproductive rights. And then lastly, Aaron Neeser Page, will there be a resolution on mask mandates? And that's all the comments.
Okay. We thank the public for their comments. At this time, we'll be adjourned, we have completed our agenda and we will meet back here on Tuesday, October 5th, 10:00 a.m. Thank you, everyone.
Sidney was incredible.
Yes, yes.
You've got to be reading for her.
Yes.
When was the last time this Pennsylvania uniform been asked?
USA?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
Did you get them?
I don't know. I was, it's a good question. We, we could get the girl, help you too much.
I did too.
Yeah, Bert Parks, that was the, the host on it. Hi.
I did call you yesterday.
Did it?
Yes.
What, what phone?
It was a number-